It is January sixteenth, nine AM. I'd like to call the order the County Board of Commissioners. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. Okay, I will now turn the meeting over to our county administrator and get this study session going.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Commissioner Vidrickson had asked me last week what we were talking about today, and I said, "Software." And it may occur to the commissioners, "Why is that important to talk about in particular? Why isn't it important enough to have a study session about?" What we're really talking about is a potential budget request for 2025. And just want to lay out a little bit of the timeline here. We have been talking a lot about facilities. And today, we will be releasing the RFP jointly with the City of Salina for study of the downtown facilities, including the old jail, Memorial Hall. But we get that study done this year. It'll be, we won't have budget numbers to work off of until '25, which means we won't have money until '26. So even though we're concentrating heavily on, on facilities, we're really not going to be turning dirt on anything new until, at best case, 2026. So that gives us a little window of opportunity in 2025 to tackle another project, which we feel is significant, both in terms of money, we're probably talking at least a six-figure digit, and staff time. It's probably, we're probably talking three people full-time for a year. Because what we're talking about is replacement, potential replacement of our financial system, which has not been done in eighteen years. So when I say "financial system," people think of QuickBooks or something like that. But just a little bit about the breadth of the system. We're talking budget, payroll, HR records, accounts payable, inventory, cash receiving, and what's known as our chart of accounts, which is all those digits that we use to keep money in the right accounts. So Hannah compiled some statistics on how many transactions of various types we're talking about when we say "the financial system."
So just, this is just on the accounts payable side. Every week when we process accounts payable, we're talking about probably, on average, five hundred invoices. And then the average amount of our accounts payable is about 2.2 million. We've got about twenty-three hundred active vendors that we pay throughout our different financial system. And we've done a really good job with trying to migrate from paper checks to ACH or wire-type payments. We're still, that's still kind of a work in progress. But right now, that's probably a good sixty, forty split, forty percent checks, sixty percent wires or ACH stuff. So these are numbers from 2023. So obviously, those are ARPA, that's the jail project staff. So 2.2 million is kind of on the high side. But as Phil said, when we move into 2026 and looking at probably some additional facility plans, that's probably a really good average to understand how much money we pump out in just accounts payable.
And then obviously, we're talking, you know, three hundred and forty employees getting paid every two weeks, all the, the records associated with those. So, okay, so that's what we're potentially talking about, is a budget request to try and tackle replacement of that system in 2025, when we're not building a new facility. But why? So I will say, our current software, that again, we've been on for eighteen years, is a small, family-held company out of Colorado. And they have served us really well for a really long time. It is very customized to Kansas counties. And so we use the same system for the financial system, the tax system, and, interestingly, Noxious Weeds. We are not talking about replacing the tax system, because there are not a lot of other options out there for the tax system. We're just talking about the financial system, and we may actually need to end up replacing the Noxious Weed system this year, because they told us in December that they are going to stop supporting the Noxious Weed system as of July one. It's one of three systems that they have decided to stop supporting. This company, the, the guy who founded it passed away about a year, year and a half ago, and his son inherited, it's a small family company, his son inherited the business. His son has always been focused on the educational side of the business, rather than the local government side of the business. And so they have decided to sort of narrow their range of products. They, they're going to stop supporting the Noxious Weed application, which is used only in Kansas. They're going to stop supporting a, an investment application, which is used only by counties in the state of Washington. And they're going to stop supporting Minutes Taker, which we had here, but the clerk didn't use it because it didn't work correctly. And so we've replaced it with, with East Crime. But, so that's the company that we're dealing with. Some of the challenges that we have experienced over the last couple of years, as they have gone through their transitions. They, we think they got hacked. They won't actually come out and say that, but the system was offline for a period of time. And one of the things that they, that we have experienced is just a lack of responsiveness from their staff. They've had massive staff turnover as they've gone through this transition on their end. And a lot of the people that we've dealt with for years and years are no longer with the company, all the way from salespeople to programmers. We're also paying for some services separately that really should be included in a financial package. So the commission is aware, because you all have approved us going out and doing this, that we've purchased a debt management package and a capital budget package. And the reason we did that is because neither one of those things existed within our existing financial system. We do a lot of workarounds. There are a lot of departments that do things on Excel spreadsheets, keep track of things, because the system just simply does not have the capability, or certainly the user-friendliness, to do that. It's very, parts of the system, again, it's a very broad system, parts of the system are in pretty antiquated programming. We have been promised for a number of years that they're going to update their backend databases to more modern systems. That just hasn't occurred in a timely manner. And then there are things that have never worked well. The budget system, for budget prep. The, the system was designed for financial record-keeping, not for planning. And so things like budget prep are kind of an afterthought to get you to the financial record-keeping. It's never worked particularly well. Inventory is another one that has, has never worked particularly well. And then, of course, there, we've experienced costs for all these different standalone systems, both in terms of dollars and in terms of staff time. So just as an example, so I mentioned that this company does a wide variety of things for counties. One of the things that they do is software for registers of deeds. The registered deeds, our registered deeds, was actually the first part of the county to be on this particular system. She left the system in 2015. And I had a conversation with Rebecca the other day. She said, "They, they were on the system for fifteen years, but she left basically because of old technology. They couldn't implement e-recording. Every time they would fix something, it would break something else." So a lot of the same things that I would say we've experienced in other parts of the system. So issue number one, it's what I'll just call "existing system deficiencies," right? Issue number two, I would say, are fears that it will get worse rather than better. We, I mentioned that they're going to stop supporting Noxious Weed. They're really, I mean, the, the, the new president has sort of put his stake in the ground that they're going to modernize the company. And we're like, "Okay, well, what else does that mean you're going to not do in the future?" The third reason we might consider doing this is opportunities presented by a new system. So more, you know, more modern technology, better security, better integration with other systems, potential for more remote access. It is exceedingly difficult to tap into our financials if people are working from home or other remote locations. Most, most systems that we would potentially look at are cloud-based. So that would make that much easier. I will say, cloud also comes with some risks, right? That, you know, those systems, because they're open to the internet, could get hacked. But the existing system, we think, got hacked too. So there, there are pluses and minuses to cloud, but, but it does provide an advantage in terms of remote access. And then the last potential reason, I'll link it back to the vision that this commission adopted last year. So one of your five key points was service and infrastructure. And you talk about providing high-quality customer service and cultivating a culture of continuous improvement and efficiency. And our existing system is a detriment to those two goals. And a new system would potentially enhance those two particular goals. So my next, the next thing I wanted to say is, "Why now?" So I talked a little bit about the fact that 2025 would be kind of downtime between our past run of facilities and the new run of facilities. I also think, and Jamie can pipe in here, but I also think we want to avoid an even-numbered year for a potential implementation. As you know, the clerk's office has bigger elections in even-numbered year. They have an election every year these year, these days, but, but certainly the even-numbered years are the bigger elections. So, and we, we also have new staff. IT, part of the reorganization with Lauren taking over, is that he is going to be looking for a position that's specifically dedicated to system application implementation. So there would be a body there to dedicate to this. But with that said, no time is ideal. I mean, you're talking about a really significant chunk of the organization, and it would be a lot of investment in time and energy and pulling out the remainder of my hair. And so I would say 2025 is sort of the best bad year. On the other hand, there are some reasons not to do this. And I want to be clear about that. This is, this is not a sales job for the commission. This is a discussion for the commission, right? So I want to be clear that there are reasons that you may tell us, "No, don't move forward." One of those is the, is the significant cost. I mean, both, again, financial and in terms of staff time. As I said, we're talking well over a hundred thousand dollars in cost and probably three full-time people to do this for a year. I mean, it is going to take a full year, potentially a year-plus, to get this thing up and running. And during that time, you're operating the old system, implementing the new system, migrating to the new system, and then operating both of them in parallel for a period of time so that you can double-check that the new system's working correctly before you cut over. You know, another thing is, it might get better, right? I mean, the new leadership with our existing provider, and, you know, as I said, he's focusing on their core products. He's shedding other products. They've started doing user update videos. So maybe they have actually heard the concerns from their users. Maybe they're committed to, to actually making the product better. Another reason not to do this is our financials would lose their existing integration with the tax system. So as I said, we would look at moving the financials, but not what's called TAS, which is the Tax Administration System. One reason for that, as I said earlier, is that there aren't a lot of competitors out there in the tax space. But another reason is, you simply couldn't do that in a year. That, that, moving both of those systems would be way too big of a task to do in a twelve-month time period. So there are some advantages, some significant advantages, of having the tax information just flow into the financial system. So losing that, or having to rebuild that with different integrations is a significant challenge and, and a reason, frankly, to stick with what we're doing. And then Hannah's been having some conversations with some folks on another issue and came up with another one, which is the risk of fraud during the process. If anybody's ever going to steal money, the best time to do it is when you're doing two parallel systems, right? So reasons to do it, reasons not to do it. How would we do it? So I'll, I'll stop talking here in a second. You all can ask questions. I have other folks who might want to weigh in. But I will say, if we choose to move forward, if this sounds like something that we want to at least pursue, you know, first off, we would need to have some significant conversations with staff, with department heads certainly, but also there are financial people in virtually every department who are really integrated into the existing system. And we would need to have conversations with all of those folks. You know, we would need to go out and do demos and, you know, gin up, you know, interest in, in somebody, you know, bidding on this. We would make a request for the funds as we go through the 2025 budget process. Again, would be significant. We would issue a solicitation probably in the late summer, once the budget is approved. And then, as I said before, we would keep the system up and running for, the existing system up and running for at least a year while the new system's being deployed. So that's what I have to say. Questions?
Any estimates on how long this would push it forward? I mean, if you did something new, is this good for fifteen years, twenty years? Is that hard, is that hard to know?
That's a great question, and it, and I will give you a really dance-around answer, because I will say, you know, this system, we've had for eighteen years. If you think of, if you think of a system like Windows, you know, we've had Windows for thirty years now, but it's been many different things. So if you get into the right system that somebody keeps up, maintains, evolves over time, you know, maybe it lasts for decades, if, you know. But you're also, you're investing in it over time as well. So I, I don't have a great answer for you.
Does the company that we're currently used, are they know, do they know that they, that we're looking?
So yes, so they, one of the good features about this particular company is that they do an annual user symposium in Wichita. And they did that this year. We sent staff, Hannah went down, and we made a real point. Not only Saline County, but a number of counties around our size, Cowley, Harvey, Ellis, group of them, sort of ganged up on the guy and said, "Listen, you've got a problem. We're all thinking about moving to something else." They got that message to a certain extent. I think that's one of the reasons they've started doing these update videos. We also had a conversation, so at KAC, they always have a booth at KAC. So we talked to them again at KAC, and then there was a conversation after, sort of kind of at the tail end of KAC, amongst counties. And they were invited to that, and they decided not to go to that. They wanted it to just be a conversation among the counties. But, but we are certainly not the only ones looking at this. And if we were to move forward, there is the potential of doing a joint procurement with, you know, some other county or counties.
You know, being in the IT world for many years, I've been in there. This is my first rodeo, messing with the software, messing with the system. What is the name, what's the name of the software we're using now?
So I believe the technical name of the system is Peopleware. It's from a company called Computer Information Concepts. And so most people just refer to it by the name of the company.
And what's, you, you talked about another system. What system right now have we looked at? I mean, you know, there's I mean, you know, there's accounting systems out there, not even only accounting system, but you know, you've got SAP. You've got, uh, you know, various different other, uh, systems that will integrate and will make pretty good integration and, I mean, and go in, go in at a, you know, at a good speed.
So, um, Celine County is at an interesting size. Something like SAP is probably beyond our reach because that is significant dollar amount and staff time. And that's, you know, the Johnsons and Sedgwick's of the world do SAP. We would probably be in over our head with a system like that. But Oracle recently acquired a smaller company that specializes in cities and counties about our size. And they have approached us. We are planning to do a demo with them in February, if the commission wants to move forward with it. There, uh, there are others out there. Um, the county has a number of products, public safety, uh, some of the, some of the, um, system within the Appraiser's Office, a couple of other ones that are from Tyler Technologies. Tyler also does a, a financial system package. We've heard good and bad things about their particular financial package. One of the bad things being, we think it is probably significantly more expensive on an annual basis than what we pay for our current system. There's another company out of Georgia. I think it's called BSNA. I'm not too familiar with it, but Lauren Humphrey has looked into it. They, uh, they're picking up a lot of clients in this sort of small to mid-size community range. My fear about them is that they, um, appear to be a small family-owned company like what we're dealing with now, so, um, you know, that's maybe good in the short term and bad in the long term, just like what we've experienced with our existing company, so. And, and that's just three examples that we sort of, um, know off the top of our head. We would certainly, i- if this becomes a thing that we want to do, we would start beating the bushes and.
And did you say that we had like three or four or five different counties that is on this system now?
Oh, there are probably fifty-plus Kansas counties.
Because, you know, and that's, I guess that's another way I look at it. If, if we go away from this system and go by ourself and go someplace else and the other counties are on a different system, I mean, we've got, I think we've got each other to rely on and, you know, the more we've got in this, the more we've got in this system, the more pressure we've got for that company to do whatever they need to do to make it right. I mean, you know, there's no company want to lose, you know, fifty people or fifty, uh, systems on a deal. So I mean, I think looking at, you know, looking at staying, you know, either staying with the company or combining with, you know, with the rest of the counties and kind of sticking together is, you know, I think we're gonna be better off.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, it has been wonderful to have a, a, a group of peers to commiserate with because, um, a lot of other counties have experienced the same challenges or very similar challenges that we have and so, um, there are definite advantages to that. You're, you're right. I mean, that's the whole conversation that, that we've had at the User Symposium and at KAC.
Now, noxious weed, how big or how, how complex of a program or how complex of a, really nothing. So is that something, is that something we could look into? A, a, a quick book scenario because being a standalone, easy to use, user-friendly, and I mean, if it isn't a, if it isn't a big, uh, you know, a big hog on the, uh, on the system.
One of the reasons that they are choosing to abandon that particular system is that, um, they only have nineteen counties that are customers for that system and so they, that's why they've decided to cut their losses there. Conversations with Lauren and with David Flaherty, it sounds like we could come up with some sort of database. There are some nuances in the noxious weed law in Kansas that make something like QuickBooks not exactly right, but, um, but we could probably custom program something without huge issues.
How, how many different entities in our county right now that use different softwares that aren't integrated into CIC? Cause not all entities use their products, do they? I'm just.
So every county department uses CIC for the financials. So for the budget, accounts payable, personnel, payroll, that's every county department uses CIC for that. But every department, every department has other programs for other things that are not integrated with CIC in any way, yeah.
Okay, that's, uh, that's why I was trying to figure out how, why is this, uh, headed this direction to? Cause you're not looking at something to go ahead and take where the whole county is operating under one scenario. Or are you still just look at finding a software company out here to take care of, of this part that CIC is doing and letting them still use their other softwares?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So like, for example.
That's where I was having a hard time.
So for example, um, the Appraiser's Office uses a system called Orion. Like Orion would not go away. TAS would not go away, um, you know. There are other systems that would not go.
Take care of every.
We're talking about budget, accounts payable, payroll, those kinds of things that, but it is countywide.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. I, I just, I was having a hard time grabbing hold of that scenario. Thank you.
If we step back, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, that's just for one part of it, not including the three people for the year, not including, you know, salaries and everything like that. If we step back for a year or whatever it is, take a look and see which way this is going. See if they're going to step in and they're gonna try to make this right and try to make it to where, you know, we're not having as many problems or any problems at all on this. And then revisit it. I mean, to me, uh, uh, you know, you're, you're probably, we're probably looking at three hundred thousand dollars. And that's a big chunk at one time.
I, I think you're correct about that dollar range and I, and you're absolutely correct that it's a big chunk at one time. I will say, you're not talking about a one-year delay, you're talking about at least a two-year delay just because of the election cycle and, um, so if, if we don't do it in twenty-five, it would, it wouldn't be twenty-six, it would be twenty-seven or twenty-nine. But yeah, I mean, there's certainly, there is virtue in, in, um, letting them fix their problems, yeah.
It sounds like they're trying to step forward. Uh, it, it, it sounds like they've heard the other, they've heard the counties. It kind of sounds like they're wanting to do the right thing. I mean, should we see if that's what they're gonna do?
What do your department heads want to do?
I will say universally, not a single person is excited about the prospect of the workload involved in deploying a new system. Not a single person in this organization is excited about that. But everybody recognizes that there are, that there have been issues with the existing system. I think realistically, if we stick with this system, I think we will continue to see one-offs where we're gonna have departments come and make requests for, okay, I just need this little program because the system won't do this, so I just need to buy this and I need to buy that and I, I see that as kind of the future, which is not different than it has been over the last five years or so. And I'll let, I mean, we've got department heads in the room, I'll shut up and let you all.
Quick question here, and it's that, does, does the software that we use now, the CIC, is that a a user base or do you, we own the software? I mean, or do we pay X amount of dollars per user, per year?
There is an annual subscription fee that we pay that is around fifty-five thousand dollars. It's based on, in part, on the number of users.
I, I would, I would think that the, uh, the three hundred thousand that Joe spoke about is probably on the low side. And I, it just, just historically, what we found out, three hundred becomes five hundred pretty quick. Also, the three, three people that you'd put on for, I guess, training and getting it initiated and there again, sometimes employees, it's hard for them to go away once you become attached to them and they're producing and, and giving you, uh, you rely upon them and their expertise, say, well, man, we really can't let them go even though we said it'd be a year. So you want to see employment grow. The, the thing that, that, that I want to touch on is we're asked as commissioners every year at a planning session to look at ten years, look out twenty years, you know, let's get a plan together. Here we're coming up with a master plan that's only a year out. We're looking to, to do something in twenty-five and I, I don't think there's, gives us the time attraction to put implement in place, how we're gonna do this, how we're gonna fund it and, um, but there again, we need to have, we need to have systems that are good and running and doing their job, so, sorry.
No, you're, you're good. I, I just wanted to point out the four things, you know, safety and security within the system is, uh, probably first and foremost, we had that potential scare, wasn't only with us, it was with every CIC user across the state that is, uh, treasure oriented, uh, within that process. So we never heard whether that was a factual thing or not, but the silence spoke, uh, mountains within that process. So that's, that's always a major concern, especially with our tax files. Uh, the other thing too is, uh, Joe, you pointed out, uh, other counties. Uh, we had a neighboring county that had a issue with CIC and unfortunately I think that they've lost some pretty substantial funding within that process and, uh, it might be to everybody's point to maybe do a little bit of research, get with other counties and find out, uh, what their issues are and problems and then you can relate that, uh, across the board in there. CIC notoriously, I think, is slow in responding to issues that we have. If you put in a call ticket, uh, to have to deal with, uh, let me, let me give you an example. We would populate, uh, a file for Kip Sewer. And unfortunately it only populated half the file, so we put in a call ticket and it took seven times for us to get a response for them to say, what can we do to have to resolve that? They never resolved it. We resolved it on our own within that process. And so when we pay for.
And, and I think that's a really key point. One of the, one of the things that we have experienced, we have a really great staff here, people are very adaptable. One of the things that we have experienced is we have users who have become CIC experts and provide support to other counties because we've had to figure out some of these things. So I know Jamie has provided some support to other clerks, um, as they've gone through their processes, just because she's been dealing with the system for so long, so.
Well, then the other thing is we've had to, to have them develop built-in safeguards because we couldn't see it. Nobody could see it. Our auditor couldn't see it. We couldn't see it. And so they've had to develop different things as we go along the way. So at least we know that there's an issue that, that has, uh, or a potential issue that was there and we can investigate that a little bit more. So it, it would be, uh, the system's user-friendly the way it is now. Budgetarian TAS are easy to use, at least in, in my mind and our staff's mind. But it would be nice to have a little bit more security built into that whole process. That would benefit our county and, uh, benefit my department.
I think it's worth going through, uh, the study to see what all is available to us. You know, we've made a change way, way back from eighteen years ago and it's, it's a painful process and yes, we do have the, we call them power users in our office for CIC and we're the same way. We've got other families with the situations that have come up or how-tos. I just want to make sure we have lots of time to, to study and, and see what, what we may be gaining, what we might be losing.
There doesn't seem to be a downside to exploring the option. We're not authorizing funds right away, are we?
I mean, this, this would come back as a, as a request in the twenty-five budget if you want us to.
A request for what? To do what? To change?
Just to look further?
No, I mean, we would look further now in advance of potentially making a recommendation to.
I guess I'm, I'm saying I don't see the downside of that. That's just me. I mean, I just.
It doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt to look, I, you know, I, after thinking about what Jim just said a second ago is, you know, we talked about three people. But are we taking three people out that we've got now and putting them in this position and then we've got three people over here we need to replace because we've taken them away from that position? So actually we're looking at six or are we actually looking at three people to fulfill, fulfill what we need to make that system work? So now we're way, we are up to that five hundred thousand dollars or maybe even more with that, doing it that a way.
So, um, so I will say, uh, I think one of those people is, um, this position that was sort of Lauren's old job before he became the new Brad, so that's being reorganized. So I, I think that is a, a body that we will have regard, I mean, i- if they're not working on this, they will be working on something else. If they're working on this, I think they'll be working on only this for a year. The second person is, I think we need somebody who is intimately familiar with the financial piece because that person would be the software piece. We need somebody who knows our books kind of backwards and forwards. I don't think that is somebody that we could, um, pull off of their regular job. It might be something where we might be able to find a retiree who could come back on. It might be something where we might be able to find a retiree who could come back on a basis, you know, or, or potentially hire and, you know, somebody for a limited duration. The third person I see as being, so you've got the, the software piece, you've got the, the financial piece, and then the third one, I think, is somebody to sort of keep the momentum going, kind of project manage a little bit, but also get users, like, set up the trainings, get people to it, all that kind of administrative stuff. And that one, frankly, I haven't thought about whether that would be an existing body or a new body. We could, we could potentially get somebody in for a short duration to do that. And, I mean, and depending on, depending on who we went with, I mean, some, some software companies will offer that as a service too, so it could maybe be their employee, not our employee.
And something else we haven't discussed, what, and Monty, I don't know if you remember or not, on the city, what is the city using for their financial system and what are, and?
They, they've gone to that Tyler product that I mentioned.
Are they happy with it?
Depends on who you ask in the day.
Okay.
I think they're, I think it's an improvement over some of the things they had before, but it also does not work fully the way they hoped it would, maybe.
And the reason I brought that up is, you know, I've, I've always been big on shared services. And, you know, if you've got, if we got the city using Tyler, and, you know, we take a look at it and see, and maybe that's something we lean toward, there's always that chance of shared services in there to help, you know, cover that burden, and a lot of that. I don't, you know, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the commissioner, but I, I agree with, with Monty, I think it's, it's, it's something that we should explore, take a look at, and then come back and say, okay, we want to do it, or not, I don't think it's time to do it right now.
Just a quick question, have, you know, you said earlier, talked about that, that the CIC now is looking at, and they've talked to you, they, they're listening, and have they projected any timeframe of any upgrades to their system now at all?
So, they held a county's Zoom thing back in December, and they had things that they were wanting to accomplish, as far as updates, but there wasn't necessarily timelines that they had attached to that.
Okay.
But I, potentially, there's more communication that needs to happen. One of the things that we did offer up to them after a conversation that I had with several users at KAC was, and actually, this was Jamie's suggestion, of ask CIC if they would like to have a group of county users to, you know, have monthly meetings and talk about some of these things. So, I think the communication thing is one of them that we're really looking at, having some increase in it, but to your question on timeline, there's stuff there, just no dates attached to it.
And the reason why I just thought about that is that it's like, you know, with, with that timeframe and looking at down the road, of course, usually when they have that type of upgrades, they have a cost involved with that too, so, have, I mean, what's the cost looking down the road at keeping up with them while we're in this transition of looking and all this other stuff going down the road?
So, historically, they have built their upgrades into the annual support fee that we pay them.
Gotcha, okay.
But that support fee has gone up, and last year, it went up pretty substantially from the prior year. I remember when Brad got the bill, he was a little floored by the cost.
So they, they have got that built into a way to substantiate their cost of upgrading their systems.
And in fairness to them, I believe one of the reasons that they haven't announced timelines is because I think they, like many other businesses, are experiencing trying to hire people, and in particular programmers, and I think they're not gonna know how long it's gonna take until they know how many programmers they're gonna have on staff.
Commissioner Vickersen, any comments?
Yeah, I think this should be on public information out there, it's such a big cost, a big, a big deal, and nobody in the public's gonna know a doggone thing about it.
I agree. Any other comments?
So I think what I've heard today is to explore some options of what this could look like, and then bring it back to the commission again. Sounds like that probably needs to be another sort of dedicated conversation, rather than just as a part of the budget process.
I, I, I mean, I would almost think it'd have to be, I mean, because and, and there again, it's like, I look at it as I would, feel we have one department, two department heads here, and to, to think of what we're talking about, that really affects every department. And, and of course, this is pretty much premature of where we would go or what we would do, but to sit there and think of how many departments this is going to affect, and how much time and cost, and what, what's the other questions, feels, and everything else, I'm, I'm sitting here going, it's like, wow.
I'm concerned that we might be pulling the plug on CIC prematurely and not, I mean, it sounds like we have their attention that, that something needs to happen. Is there a way to give them an opportunity to measure, to see if some of these benchmarks that we put out there can be met? Because I hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater, I mean, our department heads seem to be comfortable with CIC, and I, and I understand, whether you bring in the best thing in the world, the change is just astronomical, it's, it's just overwhelming. Probably do some employees, I would think, having to learn new systems. If it isn't working, it isn't working, but if it can be made to work, I'm more for staying with what we have. Unless it's to the point that it isn't gonna work.
Has anyone tried to get a consensus among the counties themselves to, to bring together a group, or maybe a representation of, as an example, Saline County could be the representative for the district number two among all these counties, or how many? See if fifteen or twenty of them want to get together and have a little roundtable discussion on what, what you can or cannot do, or proceed. I'm just, I don't know if that's feasible, but I'm-
I think what that also shows us too is, you know, if we're having a problem with this part of the software, and seven other of the counties having the same part of a problem with that part of the software, at least they know where to go.
And you, you probably know this better than anybody, with, with them having over fifty counties, are they already aware of this? What?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they're, they're, this has already been talked about, and they're already aware of that situation?
I think administration has, has talked with them directly, because they manage the contract with them, so I think they've had that conversation.
With these other counties? And, and that CIC? Okay, that's, I was just, I mean, I, and, and I'm, I'm with Jim, it's like, yeah, I've always been, you know, with some of the softwares I handled over the years, it's like, boy, there was a couple of years in there, you go, wow, you support them and you just lost your ass, but it's like, they finally fixed their issues and their problems and going down the road, but it's like, that's what I mean, it's like, I just, but-
I think you can explore some options and still hope that CIC comes through.
And that's, that's where I was, I mean, with the, with the cost involved with us spending the time to do that, plus the time of, and the cost of every year that this keeps going up for our support for them, CIC to fix their problems, you know, and I don't mind them recapturing some of their costs here with all fifty or a hundred counties, but it's like, let's fix them then, let's hopefully get fixed, and so, but I think that'd be the, yeah. Because I, I remember some of these businesses that spend hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I want to see the input from the staff, I want, you know, just like you, just like we asked earlier, how many of the staff want to do this? You know, there were that a bunch of them standing in a line, waving their hand, hey, I first, so I mean, we, we need, you know, as a commission, we need their input too, because it's going to affect them, and it affects them more than it's gonna affect us.
Right.
We need, we need their input, and, you know, it needs to go back to you, or Hannah, or whoever it needs to go back to, to get, well, I still agree with Monty, I still think it's, it doesn't hurt to explore, but that doesn't mean we're gonna buy anything, it's just we're gonna explore and see what's out there.
And just a quick, quick, I mean, I see Sherri sitting here from Community Corrections, but it's like, do you use CIC over there for the payroll and all that type of stuff, or what? I mean, what-
We use it in our department too.
Okay, you, you, you do, because I'm sitting here going, it's like, okay, what do, what part of the CIC do you guys use? Okay.
For, yeah.
Okay.
Payroll and accounts payable and inventory and-
Okay, gotcha, okay, thank you, I just, just wanted, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, okay, what are they doing? Gotcha.
Every department does.
Every department.
Every department does. Obviously, we input our own AP and payroll and stuff in, and then obviously HR and, and admin do the other side of it, but we actually input our own invoices.
Gotcha, okay, I just-
So Sheriff's Department and everybody, okay. Everybody, okay.
Wow.
I appreciate the fact that you said, here's the positives of making a change, and here's, and here's the negatives, I think that was very upfront. And I, I agree with Monty, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to hearing new and better things. I, I just feel for the employees, if the comfort level, if, if, if they can fix, if they can take to heart what they're hearing and, and fix these problems. Because any, anyone we go to is gonna have a user's fee, they're gonna have a-
Yes.
It doesn't matter if it's, I mean, CIC's went up, everybody goes up.
Everybody's-
So that's, that's kind of a wash there, but-
Yes. Oh, yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about, you, you've got, if, if you do move into another one, you have that, plus you have this one here of keeping it for a year or two, so you have that cost involved with it also, so, that's, that's where I was-
Who, if we went to someone else, it seems like right now, with, with fifty counties sharing the same problems, they're identified and, and it, and it makes, makes it easier to fix, if, if we go out on our own, we'll just be that one voice out there. Speaking for Saline County to this big company, it seems like you lose a lot of your, I don't know how to-
Your clout.
Clout, you know, just the muscle behind it.
Just to jump on that right there, because that's a, that's a good point, but it's like, do you know of other counties that are in this same position that want to do the same thing that you're, we're doing here? I mean, I, I know that when that brought up-
There have been discussions among at least four that I can think of, that are at some level of exploring going away.
Gotcha.
Whether it's, I, I don't know that any of them have made a decision firmly at this point, but I think there's at least four other counties that are kind of doing the same thing we are.
Do we want to be the one to invent that will? Or let those other counties get out there and let them fight the fight, and we'll pick up the spoils.
I'll just add quickly that, I know I get messages, and I don't always afford them to fill, but I get messages from other clerks saying, hey, what are you doing? Because they're looking to see what we're doing, because they've had those concerns as well. And so, they're looking in, I think they're waiting to see what we're looking into, because a lot of theirs are smaller, and so they're looking at-
We and Butler are two biggest clients, and so, and I know Butler is, I, I don't think it's a secret that they're also exploring. So, I think a lot of people are wanting us to be the, which is not necessarily a reason to do it, but, but yeah, I think a lot of these are smaller. Because the ones, the, the Shawnee, Sedgwick, Douglas, Johnson, I mean, they're, they're on, yeah, other systems that are way more expensive than three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, any more comments? I got one thing, and the, the commission can correct me if I'm wrong, I would like to discuss a little bit about the board appointments. How exactly, you know, I know how we did it on the, on the city, but I want to make sure on the county, I mean, with the board appoint, are there, you know, are there boards out there that I absolutely don't want to sit on, or is there boards out there that I don't care if I sit on it or not, or, or whatever? I know there's about three boards that is showed, that, that I was given to me, that was showed that the chairman will, will chair, I mean, was set on at that time. I've only got a couple, really, I mean, it won't change much, I've only got a couple of boards that need to be filled that, that would be, and one of them is the, would be the, the Fair Board, and the other one would be the Health Department. Other than that, most of it will, you know, we can, we can work with. And I mean, if you've got any suggestions, what ones you would like to sit on? So I can take in-
Who's on the Health Department now?
I am.
When do they meet?
The first Monday of the quarter, or the first Monday of the second month of the quarter.
Yeah. Every other month.
Yeah.
They're usually at four o'clock?
No.
They move to eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty to one, and then they serve lunch.
Well, that's enticing.
And it's not all healthy stuff either.
If you needed somebody, I'd do that one, the Fair Board meets at night, and I don't want to do that.
Yeah, that's, the Fair Board, their next, their next meeting is the twenty-third of this month at seven thirty is when they meet.
I could go back to the Fair Board if nobody else wants it, I mean, but I'm-
I think you're perfect.
And what I was wondering, I mean, if, if, you know, if you would like to go back to the Fair Board, Robert, would you have any problem setting on the the one that they met yesterday?
Well, I'm, I'm on Central Kansas Mental Health.
Okay.
And, and we didn't meet yesterday, I mean, but, and I could stay on that one.
No, what, the, I guess it's the facility, um-
Building Authority?
The Building Authority.
That's what we meant this morning.
That was this morning, okay.
Okay.
I mean, if-
Roger's volunteering for, why don't you just give it to him and end the discussion? Roger's volunteering for, why don't you just give it to him and, and the discussion? The Fair Board, he, he worked well with it for six years.
The, the current building authority is these three.
Us three.
It works fine, it's, it's, it's right before our meetings, it's easy.
Yeah.
Just, we'll keep it like that.
Are you on any boards at all?
Yeah. No, I just sit over here and do nothing, Roger.
No, no, well, I, I didn't.
And, and Bob.
Give him the Fair Board and let's get on with it.
And then what boards do you want to, you want to stay with?
Just, just ones I'm on now, other than the ones that are assigned to the chairman.
Which is?
Chamber Airport Authority.
Airport Authority.
No, not Airport.
Not Airport?
Chamber and Skeeter are the only two that are.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, that's, that's, that's fine then.
Assigned to the chairman.
And I'm, okay, and then I'm going to, I'm going to stay with the, uh, with the cybersecurity and the, uh, juvenile detention and, uh, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other thing anybody else like to bring up?
Nope.
Motion for adjournment, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.